We call this meeting to order. This is the Righteous School Board Meeting in Northfield Public Schools. Today's Monday, March 11th. Dr. Richardson.
There are a couple items in our table file.
Yes, in your table file you will see the handout or PowerPoint presentation for the Northfield High School Professional Learning Community is in there, so you can take a look at that. We also have an additional leave of absence, some retirement and resignations. Also, as an item for information, some information about the global calendar scheduled discussion.
Very good. If there's no objection, we will add those items to the agenda as we move forward. All right? We are ready to move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, all right. We will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets the minutes from the last school board meeting from February 25th. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
No.
Moved by Carrie, seconded by Noel. Any discussions? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and recognition.
Okay, we have a couple this evening. First of all, every year, the Minnesota Band Directors Association holds auditions for two statewide honor bands, and students are selected based on recorded audition which they submit. In the grade six through eight group alone, 280 people auditioned for 79 openings. It's a great honor to be chosen for this group, and it's a reward for hundreds of hours of practice, hard work, and perseverance. Four of our Northfield Middle School students were selected for the Minnesota Band Directors Association Grade Six Through Eight Honor Band. They include Anders Peterson on clarinet, grade seven, Nick Dempsey on bassoon, grade eight, James Miller on euphonium, grade eight, and Xena Schultz on tenor sax in grade eight. Also, four of our Northfield High School students were also selected for the Minnesota Band Directors Association Grade Nine, Ten Honor Band. They are Allison Langston on bassoon in grade nine, Kristy Anderson on clarinet in grade 10, Miles Brodsky in clarinet, grade 10, and Emily Swanson on bass clarinet, grade 10. Students will perform later this spring with other outstanding young musicians who've been selected to participate in these bands under the direction of some fantastic music educators from the state of Minnesota. Again, congratulations to all of our fine musicians. Also, the middle school this last month sent out 69 participants to the Regional History Day in Mankato last Thursday. All of our students had a very memorable and positive experience. In addition, 15 of our students earned Honorable Mention Distinction, and 20 of our students will be advancing to the State History Day at the University of Minnesota on May the 4th. And then finally, I'm sure that some of you have already had the opportunity to enjoy Rock and Roll Revival 10. I had a chance to go to the opening night festivities, and it was outstanding. In fact, the students and all the work received a standing ovation at the end of the performance. And hopefully, other people who haven't had a chance to do so, I believe there still may be a few tickets left, and would encourage folks to get a chance to see the outstanding work of our students under the direction of Ray Kudray.
Thank you.
That's what I have.
Board members, other announcements or recognition? Julie?
I did want to piggyback on Dr. Richardson's comments about the State History Day or Regional History Day this past week in Mankato, when I had the opportunity to be there. And the History Day project is really very comprehensive at the middle school, and the number of staff people that get involved and the amount of research that these kids have to do for it is very comprehensive, and it's a really wonderful experience for the kids. And I was extremely proud of the Northfield kids because regionally, we really stacked up well against the other schools there. Congrats to those kids.
Thank you. Others? I had one. The eighth grade orchestra, although middle school orchestras were in a festival a couple weeks ago, and the eighth grade orchestra qualified to move on to the next level of competition, which is the first time that that's ever happened for a Northfield orchestra. So they actually play at Bethel University a week from Wednesday. Typically, it's at Orchestra Hall, but Orchestra Hall is under construction. Congratulations to the eighth grade orchestra. All right? We are ready to move on to our first item for discussion report, which I believe is the Northfield High School Professional Learning Community. All right. Board members, you should have had in your table file a PowerPoint presentation.
Madam Chair and members of the school board, thank you for this opportunity to share one of our PLCs with you and the progress that that group continues to make among the other groups in the high school on an annual basis. And it is an opportunity to showcase some things that, you know, perhaps you don't have students directly connected with, with the staff that we bring into PLCs, so it's a great opportunity for us to share those windows for you that you may not otherwise get at the level of specificity that we have. So I will share with you one story about the three people that will be presenting tonight from our Social Studies Department. As I move about the building and visit different PLCs, this group used to greet me with, you know, really open arms and a welcoming nature as I came in and would really embrace me into the conversation.
They were singing on the way in.
They were, and they tend to do that on occasion. Now, ever since I asked them to participate in the PLC presentation, they view me with a little bit of sense of suspicion every time they come in the room, so I have noticed that is a slight change in demeanor, but hopefully that will end in a few minutes.
Thank you.
I also shared with them that, given that we're having parent-teacher conferences at the exact same time, that perhaps that was advantageous to them, so that the questions would be a shorter amount of time than they normally are. But I say that in jest. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce our members of our US History PLC, Eric Sandberg, Mary Schmidt, and Sarah Swan McDonald, and we'll start with Eric Sandberg.
All right, first off, I just want to say thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to come up in front of you guys and share a little bit about what we're spending our Wednesday mornings doing during our PLC time. So thank you so much for doing that, and we're pretty pumped to share what we're doing with you guys. So last December, we went to this standards-based grading conference that was given by Rick Wormley, and essentially was talking about different standard-based grading kind of things. And one of the topics that came up at that conference was this idea of retakes, all right, and how you should have students, or his idea was you should have students retake the material, the test, whatever that you're doing, so that they are going to essentially achieve this certain benchmark, this certain level of proficiency that you have for your students, all right? And we're going to hold them accountable to achieving that by having them do retakes, because kind of his whole thing was behind, the logic behind it essentially was that if you let the student get the D, get the F, okay? A, they're getting the bad grade, it's easier for the student to just let them slide on by, keep on getting those Ds and Fs. They're not learning your content, we're not meeting our goals by teaching these kids what we want them to know. So the idea behind the retake was that you get to have those students, all right? Pull those kids, they kind of said you have to, if they dig themselves in a hole, don't let them dig the hole, you have to go in there, pull them out of there. All right? We're going to pull them out of there by having them, holding them accountable, having them do these retakes. So that's kind of what we based our SMART goal off of, and our SMART goal will increase performance of American History 10 students so that 100%. So our goal is every one of these students that are taking American History 10 will demonstrate 70% greater mastery as measured by Common Summitative Assessments. And last year was kind of the first time us three were working together, and during our PLCs last year, we were really focusing on creating Common Summitative Assessments. So we're all essentially, all US History 10, American History 10 teachers are giving essentially the same test with slight modification depending on the teacher. So that was last year, and last year we were also working on this whole retake thing. And our goal is that these kids, these students, get 70% or greater on these Common Summitative Assessments that we've created.
Excellent. Thank you. All righty. So here's kind of how the plan turns into kind of a concrete goal or statement like Eric mentioned. We're hoping for 100% of our students receiving, you know, 70% mastery of the standards as presented in Common Unit Summitative Assessments. So when students fall below that 70% mastery line, we kind of put them in this category of language that we borrowed from Rick Wormley of NTY, not there yet. And we like this language or prefer this language better than you failed or you've got to do it again, because it implies, you know, you're not there this first time around, but you're not there yet, and we're expecting you to get there, and we believe that you can get there. So that's kind of a positive spin on the lingo of that required retake population. So any student, again, who falls below 70% on those unit summative assessments is considered not there quite yet and is required to continue investing time and energy into the content and into mastery of those standards. So the plan kind of looks like this. It's not just, yep, you can fall below 70% and come on in whenever you want and give it another shot. We do require evidence of further investment in the material, in the content, in the standards. So the students who are not there yet, who have fallen below the 70% mark, are kind of discreetly given a retake plan. So when test grades are coming back, those students get a little half-white sheet of paper, and it's pretty straightforward. It asks for their name and the name of the unit and their test score that first time around, and then kind of a concrete plan of what they're going to do next. They're required to invest 30 more minutes of preparation, and we look for specifics there, so hopefully they'll give us, you know, 30 more minutes of reviewing my binder or 30 more minutes of quizzing on unit vocabulary. And that has to be signed off by an adult. So hopefully, it's one of us. So they come in and they spend time with their history teacher going over the standards that they fell below 70% on, but we recognize with crazy schedules and, you know, time stuff that that's not always possible. So it could also be a study hall or a seminar student. A lot of our not there yet students are in the Seminar 10 course, which I'm sure you're familiar with the course, so that seminar teacher can also be there to sign off and kind of validate on that additional investment or preparation. Or of course, a parent, guardian, someone at home can also kind of validate that that investment has happened. The other thing about the retake plan, and I don't mean this in the wrong way, but we try to make it a little bit painful so that they're trying to avoid having to, just a little, not, you know, too painful, but just a little bit. So again, it's not just I can vomit and then whenever I want, you know, however I want, however many times I want, I can do it again. We try to make the investment kind of timely. So the other piece here is that it doesn't happen during class, so it's never, you know, get out of a lesson free plan to retake the test one more time. It happens on their time. So that means before school, coming in early, it means staying late after school, it means coming in during a study hall, it's on your own time. And we try to have this happen as soon as possible. Of course, when that information is fresher in their mind, the better to retake the test. So we try to get those scheduled within the first couple days of when the tests are graded and back to the students. Again, scheduling crazy stuff happens, kids don't show up when they say they were going to show up, yada, yada, yada. So we kind of try to set the firm deadline that if you don't retake it by the time the next unit test rolls around, we don't hand you the next unit test. So we have to get that squared away. We need 70% mastery of those standards before we really officially allow you to move on to that next step. So just a little painful, just slightly painful. All righty. So the other thing we noticed, as we were kind of experimenting with this required retake population, is that even though it was a little bit painful, it wasn't quite enough. We tend to have kind of chronic retakers who are in the not there yet category over and over again, and they can get there. When they retake it, they're able to get 70% or better. We know they're capable of it. When they invest more time, when they come in and review with us, it can happen, but it was consistently happening after, after falling below 70%, not before, not the first time around. So with our chronic not there yet students, we've added the second phase of the policy, which is kind of a front-loading requirement. So now, if you are a not there yet student on the last exam, before we hand you the next exam, we need to see a completed study guide. And they get the study guide at least a week in advance, they have short-answer questions in advance, and we need to see kind of an outline, a sketch of their thoughts, what they're thinking, some definitions, some ideas, some direction, so that we can kind of check in on the front end rather than kind of picking up the pieces afterwards. So study guides, of course, are given to every student. For the students who are not in that chronic not there yet category, they're not requirements, they're just guides and resources. For these kids, they are requirements, they must have that check-in before they're allowed to take that unit exam. Again, with the goal being that that advanced preparation and doing the work and investing the energy that we know they're capable of doing will happen beforehand, and we can avoid all the retaking stuff later.
So we've noticed a few things through this process, which has really been over the course of the last year and three or four months, and Mary explained the progression of what we've added to make this a more successful endeavor for everyone, including ourselves as teachers. A few things that we've noticed right away that really, I believe, has revolutionized how we teach and we present our information, that failure is just simply not an option. It's not within our, the realm of possibilities, failure is not there. And that really changes how, I believe, we teach every single day. So we're reviewing materials in different ways, our formative assessments are much more relevant, it's much more at the front of our mind. How we even write our summative assessments together, I think, has changed to make sure that we're as clear as we possibly can be, and we're measuring our standards exactly as we want them to be measured. So that, and then also that weight to the summative assessment has now taken on a different role. So that we're really putting a lot of emphasis on that summative assessment as our way to measure how students are doing in terms of understanding the standards. And then we've also noticed that we need to allow for many, many different ways of expressing what a student knows. So we have allowed for many, many more of our students, not just our special ed population and our students who have IEPs or 504s, but we have really opened it up to absolutely any student who wants a different way of showing and expressing what they've learned. So whether that's reading a test out loud is now available to any student that needs not, again, just not the special ed student anymore. Smart pens have become a vital part of our testing process, and that technology has just been fantastic. And tonight in conferences, I mentioned it to three parents, I said, I bet your student would do so much better if they used a smart pen, and let's, you know, you can encourage them at home, and we'll encourage them here. And that technology allows a student to speak their answer versus write. So in a student who's struggling with writing, we might not get all the knowledge that they have expressed on paper, and so they might not do well in that summative assessment, but the smart pen allows for that communication to be there. So that has been some, there's been some amazing results from that. And any sort of language clarifications, working closer with the EL teachers and working closer on dissecting questions themselves that might, there might be different hangups that we haven't considered before, again, in the way of expressing knowledge. And here as a teacher who's taught here for a little while, teaching with new teams, I've also, newer teachers, I've also noticed how awesome it is to work with a fabulous professional team of colleagues. It's just been such a joy that when you have this PLC opportunity, something I've noticed that's so obvious is how cool it is and what amazing results come from a professional group together, so.
Speaking of amazing results, all right, here's our data, here's what we've been kind of collecting, compiling, et cetera. Phase one, phase one was prior to our retake policy, so we tried to gather up all the data pre-Rick Wormley, okay, conference. So we looked at our assessments and we essentially saw, tried to find who fell through the cracks. Who did we let slip by that still had a D or an F on an assessment, who maybe didn't meet the standards that we currently have for them? Prior to test retake policy, 22% of our students scored lower than a 70% on summative assessments. Okay, so that's pre-everything that we've kind of been working towards. We have phase two now. Phase two, we implemented the retake policy. So no front-loading yet, this is just the retake policy, this is right after the conference. 17% of students fell below 70% on summative assessments. All right, so that was, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong here, but that was the pre, before they kind of retook the test, that was how many kids fell through the cracks. So that's not how many people stayed below 70%. We had a lot of retakes, all of 70%, 17% of those kids would have retaken that to get above 70%. So we're just calculating the data to see who scored below the first time. And then we have phase three, and this is the whole front-loading process. You do the work, you have to prove you've done some sort of work before you've taken the test. And after this phase, we have 9% of students that have done, in the front-load phase, that have scored below 70% on the summative assessments.
The first time.
The first time around. So that's our data right there. The conclusions that we can draw from this, I mean, there's many variables and whatnot, but we kind of like the way that data is going. We hope to move on, so.
Retrajectory.
And our next, so, and I think as far as our SMART goal goes, that we want 100% of our students to have 70% or greater. I think we are at, do we have the exact percentage? I literally think we're talking two students. I think we came up with two students out of all of our students, we have 300 and some students. I think we have two students total that have not had that 70% or greater after the retake is all done. So our next steps as a PLC, and we have some of our colleagues who have started doing this, is to look at our assessments, our social studies standards are changing as we speak. So this is a great, great time for us to look at our assessment questions and then tie it directly to a particular unit standard. So questions one through three might tie to standard 149, right? And then the retake policy would just address that particular standard. So instead of retaking a chunk of a test, for instance, just the, you know, the authentic assessment part of the test or the short-answer part of the test, maybe they would take now particular sections that just align directly with the standard. And then also to have this idea of individual kind of recovery plans for how to express their knowledge. So already, we've done some of that with individual students saying, okay, this isn't working, how about if we try this instead? But being much more intentional about that individual recovery plan is also a goal of ours. So that's our, that's our process of the last year or so, and we're available for questions if you have any.
Board members, Anne?
I have one. I have a question about the SMART pens, and it concerns me a little bit because of, I think it's really strong skills to have writing across the curriculum. So they're speaking their answers, right?
Right.
Are those mostly students who have language issues or, I'm just wanting them to be able to write their answers?
Absolutely. And for that, Anne, we have places and times and places where we will assess writing. So, and absolutely, students need practice writing in every sort of curricular area. But we found on a summative assessment, where we really want to know where they land with the standards, that we want to make sure that we can get the knowledge about where they are on the standard. And if writing gets in the way of communicating that on a summative assessment, we want to just take that element away. So at that summative assessment moment, we, more than anything, just want to know where their knowledge is as it aligns with the standard, and do they have mastery in that content? Whereas there are other times and places that writing is going to be essential. For instance, right now, we're in World War II, we're researching battles, they will be doing lots of writing, and that's an essential part of communicating that story that they're going to be sharing with their colleagues. But in the summative assessment part, we really want to focus on where are they with that standard, and what do they know about that information? So for some students, taking that writing element away allows them to express their knowledge in a completely different way. So there are some amazing stories of what's happened with that smart pen, actually. Yeah. Yep.
Other questions? Carrie? Fabulous presentation, just so interesting. And, you know, the whole thing with testing kids as sort of a way of grading them and rank ordering, you know, students as opposed to assessing them as a way of making sure they're getting where they need to be. I think that's a real paradigm shift for teachers and parents and students, probably. And so my question is, are other PLCs doing this? I mean, this just seems to be a model for so many areas, and are you able to share that across PLCs?
Considering a book offer and a student tour.
Yeah. We're putting all this eye into.
Roll to her.
I don't know. What a joke.
You were doing really well.
Yeah. And we kind of went over the edge, didn't we?
Carrie, the short answer would be yes, there are other groups doing it. I would say that the conference that they spoke of with Rick Wormley is really a, that the notion of his conference is something that we've, as a systematic interventions team, which is a group that meets here on a monthly basis, looking at interventions, essentially kind of our layer of RTI, has really looked at Wormley's work as being something that we share with the full staff in detail. And we've looked at a number of different methods in terms of, we've talked about the notion of bringing him here, we've talked, excuse me, talked about the notion of bringing, of taking representatives from our departments and sending them to a training. He is in Milwaukee, Wisconsin in April. So there are a number of different avenues that we're kind of pursuing along the standards-based grading path. We had a group, actually Sarah participated in a trip to Austin where they're doing what's called Grading for Learning, which speaks to this philosophy. And it was interesting because, I probably shouldn't say this on television, but we went there looking for ideas and what we could implement here. We came away really with an understanding of kind of how we don't want it to be implemented, and that's not a criticism of Austin's system as much as it was kind of a juxtaposition of what's happening in Austin and kind of the nature of the way the implementation occurred there and what I think we could do here with our staff, with our students, in a way that just serves us better. So I think that more and more staff are being kind of exposed to this notion of, well, if the students didn't master the material, it's that they didn't master it yet, as they described. And so what are the next steps to make sure that they all are reaching that level of mastery? And one thing I do want to point out, when we talk about standards-based grading and grading for learning and the Wormley research, it is a tremendous amount of work for the teaching staff, because as I think Mary had mentioned, it's a lot easier to say, well, you failed, you know, try again some other time. This is about, you know, really, you know, taking those students and saying, well, no, you don't have an option, and if you didn't succeed the first time, then we're going to work with you, and you need to pull some of the weight, but we need to get there before we move on. And if, those of you that have seen the movie Dead Poet Society, which didn't use to date me so much, and now it does, but there's a sequence in there where these two roommates, one is really kind of trying to influence the other's behavior and approach to life, and Todd says, you know, I can handle this myself, you can just butt out. And his roommate looks at him and says, no. He says, what do you mean, no? He says, no. And then that's kind of this turning point where he understands that, okay, he's not just going to let me do it myself, he wants to influence how I behave. And I think that that's really at the core of standards-based grading and Wormley's research, to say, we can't just stop at that first layer, that we taught it, they didn't learn it, then we move on. This is, we taught it, they weren't ready for it yet, so now how do we reteach it? How do we program the students with the support and the mechanisms and the resources to get to that point so that they can move forward with those standards? Because to leave those gaps as gaps, you know, they're going to take those gaps with them to the next year, into the next year, and into infinity. So, you know, I think it's important to note that the system that they're talking about, in fact, we've had conversations about the system, kind of, oh, it is really hard, because sometimes the, you know, there are a fraction of students that don't want to, don't want to meet them, you know, even at that second turn. So, you know, I think it's important to see the amount of effort being put into that. And as Mary's talked about, with a little bit of pain, I think part of that pain is understanding that they need to provide, you know, if not an equal, certainly a significant amount of work to meet the staff where they are.
Noel?
I'm glad Mr. Lehr stepped to the microphone because I need him to hear this. I think, you know, your enthusiasm probably wouldn't be a sufficient description, but I think wild exuberance probably would probably document how you made your presentation, and thank you so much.
Carrie?
Well, I have a question, if you would, come back here and say. So I was going to reflect on what Carrie said about being a model for professional collaboration and data and changing your teaching and your assessment and how the students are learning, it was fabulous. And this is probably going back to Joel again. It sounds like the opportunities for professional development might be the way to bridge the teams that, the teachers that don't have this fabulous team to collaborate with, to, because you said it's really hard work to do this sort of thing, and if people are kind of on their own with those sort of singleton classes, is this professional development that you're talking about, is that the way to try to bridge that?
I think there, you know, I think yes, and again, to give you a simple answer, yes, I think that part of that is in combination with some interesting, I guess, research that's out there that looks at kind of trickling the notion of grade-level PLCs into secondary schools. So, you know, we have always thought in the framework here, in the six years we've been doing PLCs really formally, that it's really not something we can do, so we break into our departments and we break into courses. And that's really then where that limitation blossoms, because we've stopped doing kind of what makes, I would argue, PLCs so much easier at the level. of what makes, I would argue, PLCs so much easier at the elementary level because they are working with that common curriculum and common type of student across the board. But there are schools that are actually playing with the notion of grade-level PLCs across disciplines. So, in the case of, for example, I'll use two people, Brian Stevens, who works with all seniors in economics, and Rachel Hoffelt, who doesn't work with all seniors in mathematics but works with the predominant number, that there would be some commonalities of student there and looking at some of those philosophies that Wermelie and the standard-based grading philosophy incorporates that really kind of strips away the notion that it has to be discipline-specific and that you can look at some things conceptually. And Mary Hansen, and I've also talked about, you know, can you look at some common threads that, how do you approach vocabulary study within the confines of multiple discipline systems? So, I think that we, you know, we were through an interesting stage in the first, if you remember the first year of PLCs at the high school, we really had more kind of a project focus as opposed to discipline and course-specific. And then, there was kind of this natural progression to say, well, it's much more useful and efficient for us to move as courses and departments. And I think that as we've moved on that path, those departments have won and those systems in social studies would be won where sometimes we have a single teacher teaching a course or that it's a group, a grade level rather than looking at it across a discipline, excuse me, that we do need to examine other opportunities. So, yes, I think the standard-based grading piece alone would function in that way, but I think that some of the other conversations we've been having about how can we really look at grade-level systems and approach, you know, similar to the notion of writing across the curriculum, that how do we approach a similar philosophy in standard-based grading across those grade levels?
Do you remember? Carrie?
Looking at the data, you know, the phase one, two, and three, and this front-loading kind of responsibility on the students, it seems to me what you're doing is really teaching students how they need to prepare, you know, kind of teaching them to understand how they best learn, which, you know, it always surprises me that kids can get to this level and really not know that about themselves yet. But I think the fact of the matter is they don't, you know, and that's just an enormous benefit to the students. And hopefully, you know, that will become sort of part of the culture as we move forward so that it won't be as much work always to do this because students will be coming, you know, with a higher level of self-awareness and how to prepare. But I just see that as another great gift. And then, what you're talking about is across disciplines, you know, that applies to anything.
And, you know, Carrie, that was very insightful because really, if you look at the cross-section of students that these teachers are dealing with in American History 10, a number of those kids are coming out of the academy model where that support mechanism takes the shape of really multiple bodies, really not allowing failure because those teachers and staff members in the academy are on them. And so, I've always used the analogy that the academy is kind of this nest, it's a bird nest where they're getting the, sorry to extend this analogy, but the nourishment and the support they need because they're not going to fall out of the middle of a nest, that really the 10th grade year for a lot of those students is they're up on the edge of the nest. We haven't pushed them out yet. And really, what they have described here is that mechanism of the edge of the nest that we're moving you up there a little bit and preparing you for that chance to, you know, to give you a shove and fly on your own. And really, what we see from academy research about students as they move through that is pretty impressively startling of how those students are able to fly once they've had that two-step process. And really, this speaks to what I would describe over the last, you know, three years in our conversation with academy folks as really the absence of an intervention for students who left the ninth-grade academy weren't really in a position to fly on their own yet. And it might be writing, it might be reading or study skills for that matter. But this is the type of model really that fills that gap and allows them to, you know, to sit on the edge of the nest and better prepare themselves. And I think what they are doing differently than the academy might is exactly what you described, that notion of requiring them to develop those independent processes so that when they get to be juniors, that those things trigger automatically as opposed to after the first test or not until they're required to have this list of front-load items.
Fabulous report, just excellent.
Madam Chair, if I could, take just a minute and talk to them about the concept of unit summative assessment and what's the process that you went through to get that to happen? Because I know as we've talked about PLCs through the last several years, a big piece has been, how do we get to the point where people are really focusing on creating those summative assessments at the unit level? And how did you guys get there? And how did the PLCs support that process? Anybody ready for the road tour?
You're speaking to the notion of the common formative assessment, you mean, or summative assessment?
Basically, my understanding is that you've created unit summative assessments that are common between the three of you. And what I'm asking, I guess, is what's, how did the PLCs support that happening? And will it also support that next step of actually aligning them to the new standards when those standards become available?
Well, I guess, please start in, but I, without the PLC time, it would be nearly impossible to make a common unit summative assessment because in that is a teacher's hand and in that is a teacher's personal opinion on what they see as the most important. And if you even think about with the short-answer questions we design as upper-level, higher-level thinking questions, in that alone are a lot of opinions and perspectives on what is the most important thing that we should be asking. And there's only so much time, there's only so much space to assess. And so, if you think of all the different ways you can assess and all the different questions you could on any unit, even that alone, that conversation is so important. And to be looking at the standards and now as we're going through them with these new standards, it's a prime chance for us to look at those questions and see what standards we have that we are required to do. And that is a lot of interpretation for social studies. The standard is written in a very, very broad stroke, which in some ways we appreciate, in some ways it makes it very difficult. But the PLC time allows us for that conversation, our professional conversation of, you know, what do we think as historians is the most important and what are those skill sets we need them to have in terms of critical thinking and inquiry and historical analysis? So, that time is pretty fabulous and essential to coming up with a common assessment. And then, it's a lot, I mean, we joke about how many times we look at our assessments and how many times we have to rewrite questions. Questions, really good questions are extremely hard to write and questions that are really testing what you want them to test. So, we have refined and revised and tweaked so many questions that I thought previously were awesome questions. And we're sitting together and saying, wait a second, that's actually not a very good question at all. So, I guess that would be what I'd say part of the PLC time is that that process is a very, very long process to make a very good assessment. And that's just helped so much by collaboration and our various perspectives.
As Sarah mentioned, I mean, it's as broad as looking at the standards and how are those represented in the summative assessment and as detailed and nitpicky as what are the exact words in that question. One of the most eye-opening experiences for me is when we had, or maybe it was multiple, I don't know, a student who had the test read aloud by a BLO teacher. And that teacher went through and circled every word in the test that provided some kind of obstacle for that student to answer the question, not because of lack of content awareness or knowledge, but because of a difficult word. So, even going through and looking at those little language barriers and saying, okay, can we find a simplified word that's still going to get us the evidence of the content mastery but isn't going to get them stuck, you know, on a word that's unfamiliar? So, it's as broad as kind of comparing to the standards and making sure they're all represented and as nitpicky as what words are we going to use?
Thank you.
John?
I just want to make sure I understand what you've been telling us now. If I understand, you're each teaching different groups of students, right? You're not team-teaching and seeing the same students?
Right.
And so, what you're saying, the benefit to the three of you for the PLC has been is to develop common standards and a common evaluation so that you make sure that each student at Northville High School is going through 10th-grade history, is covering all the same material and has the same level of mastery and they're getting the same grade as that.
Exactly.
And that's something you weren't able to do about the PLCs.
Correct.
You know, and to that end, John, the one piece that I would add to that is that with common assessments and a common curriculum, those two pieces in the hands of three teachers teaching three different groups of kids, they come back and there is a wealth of opportunity for discussion once the data that comes back, the grades, how those students perform on those assessments. Because if they are, if essentially what they're trying to accomplish is the, not the same level of achievement, but success for all their students, then there is going to be data there that says, well, a number of my students performed lower than expectation. All of my students performed above expectation. And it's... Sorry. See, they take this very personally. I don't know if I've shared that with you.
Put that around.
I want all the mind to perform.
But then the dialogue comes back that, you know, sometimes it's a discussion about how the question is written, but sometimes it's also, well, so how did you approach that particular piece of the standard or that particular piece of the lesson that maybe I can learn some insight? Whereas, before, if I tested one way and Noel, you tested another way, but we were teaching the same content, there wasn't that commonality of data that where we could go back and say, okay, what did you do that I can do? Or what did I do that you can do? So, there's a whole level of component for that professional dialogue. And, you know, just the notion of, you know, Sarah commented about time. And we have, before you here, we have a cognitive coach, we have a student council advisor, we have a link coordinator, we have a two-season coach. You know, so there are five other things that are going on that can occupy a lot of their time before school, after school, during their prep, during their lunch. PLC time is special and sacred, so it's that time when they can say, I can turn off all of those things. I can't make copies, I can't talk about coaching, I can't do this, I can't do that. Not coaching, but talking about all these other things that are pulling at me. And for this hour, we can focus in on the kids in American History 10 and our delivery of content. And so, I think that that's where, you know, we've had conversations over the years and I know other districts have grappled with the notion of, well, how do you carve away that hour in the middle of the day? What I have seen causes me that question, how can you not? Because it really does emphasize the importance. And I think I remind my staff on a regular basis that it's a gift from you and the community that you said, you know, for this hour, forget about everything else and focus in on instruction with the kids you have and see what you can do to make a difference in their lives as learners. And to me, that's an incredible statement of faith and trust on your part, but it's also very fun to see what staff are able to do with that. And it's just, you know, one of the many ways in which staff are utilizing that opportunity you provide.
And I think, if I could just add, I think what it's also done, seeing this last six years of this evolution of PLCs, is that because we have that time, I think all of a sudden, we are placing an importance on these assessments and an importance on data. I mean, if you look at 22% of my kids used to fail and I would say, bummer, let's try it again next time. And we just move on. And so, all of a sudden, my standards are really important and I'm emphasizing that I really want, that it's so important you got to pass these, you know, and we're doing that jointly as a team. And we know all of our students are walking away with that same message that these US history standards are so important, we're going to make sure you pass. And that just, that conversation, I mean, the conversation's so rich, there are so many different avenues that that can go with our PLC time in terms of the emphasis of we are not going to allow anyone to fail. And we believe in our standards this much that we're going to make sure you get there and how are we going to do that? And there's no way one brain can do that alone, but multiple brains seem to figure it out.
Other questions?
Thank you. This, it is so important for the board and the community to hear these stories about the PLCs. And I think just understanding how it's transforming student teaching or student learning and teaching practices is really, really helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are ready to move on to our next item for discussion report, which is the English language transition kindergarten.
We're going to talk about some recommended changes to the English learner transition kindergarten. First of all, let me point out that we used to talk about English as a second language and now we're using the terminology, English learner. I'm not sure where that came from, other than, you know, we're instructed to do that by the Department of Education, they're referring to this as English learners. To me, that could be a schoolboy in London, but it is the same group of people that we used to talk about in terms of English as a second language. The transition kindergarten grew out of the Companeros Curriculum Review Process. As we were gathering data and doing research, one of the things that we came across is that students who have a firm grasp in their first language are, learn a second language more efficiently and more effectively. It's sort of the foundation upon which that second language is learned. We also knew that we had some students that were entering our system who not only had not developed second language skills, but really didn't have first language skills. We were testing them in Spanish and English and they were coming out as non-English speakers and non-Spanish speakers. And these students were just having a devil of a time in school. We often in third and fourth grade found them being referred to special education and they had just had huge language deficits that impacted them across the board. And so, we came with the recommendation three years ago in January to create the transition kindergarten. Now, there were two other factors that came about with this. First of all, the Hispanic community values instruction in and supports the instruction from their native language. So, as we began talking about this and going around doing focus groups, the Hispanic community embraced this and highly values that we have this kindergarten model. Secondly, at the time, we were looking at AYP and we were looking at penalties to the school district. And this was one of our efforts to try and improve the structure for our English learners. Now, the outcomes from our transition kindergarten, L1 or Spanish, their skills improved. And I believe that last year, every one of the students made a full, what would you call it? Unit improvement in their Spanish skills as measured by the oral IPT.
They also all left reading level two.
Yes.
Reading in Spanish.
Yeah, left, yeah, left reading level two in Spanish. So, our goal was accomplished. They are learning Spanish and improving those skills. Now, the all-day kindergarten also provided an opportunity for them to have more opportunity to learn pro-social skills, how to be an effective student, what it means to take turns, do all of those kinds of things. And I have to tell you, if you want to walk by that kindergarten class and watch what's going on, it is inspirational. Now, many of these students went to the Companeros program and they absolutely flourished. They had that background in Spanish, they were ready to go. But we also had some of the kids from that kindergarten class who ended up in the contemporary program. And they were actually at a disadvantage because they didn't have exposure in kindergarten to English like all the other kids did. And so, they were coming in and they were behind. Now, our data seems to suggest, and we've only been doing this for three years, that they're catching up, those kids that were in that classroom by third grade. But first grade, we know that they're really struggling and behind their classmates who did have exposure to English in kindergarten. Now, over that three-year period, we've also noticed some changes across the district. We have fewer students today who are entering school with little or no skills in both L1 and L2, not across the board. Now, I might speculate as to what that is. My guess is that they've got siblings who are in school that are speaking English and might be going home. They've just been here longer and had opportunities to learn English, that's my guess. But the important thing is we have less students who are coming into the system across the board who are scoring at the non-English speaking level, if you will. board who are scoring at the non-English speaking level, if you will. Now, this past year in our EL kindergarten, nine of the 18 students actually met the criteria that we established when we set up the program, which was that you were non-English speaking in English and scored as non-English speaking in Spanish. The other nine were added to the class to fill it out to a full 18. So the number of students that meet that rigid criteria has dropped substantially in a three-year period. Does that make sense? Now, the other thing that has occurred is the state of Minnesota has adopted the WIDA standards. Now, that stands for World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. It is being adopted by many, many states, and it's a way of looking at standards for English learners. Now, along with that, come tests. For students in grades basically two and above, they take the WIDA access, and that stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English State to State. So it's across many states that they're doing the assessment. Now, for the younger students, kindergarten and beginning first grade, they're assessing using the MODL, which is Measures of Developing English Language. Now, these tests are much more sophisticated than the tests that they replace. They take a look at listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And in the back of the handout that you got from me, you'll see a printout of the WIDA can-do statements. And so not only does the WIDA categorize the level of English language skills that a student has, but it gives examples for each, for teachers at each grade level as to what they might expect a student at a particular language level to be able to do, to comprehend, and to be able to perform. And so I've given you just one sample of that, it's sort of a broad one, but there are specific ones at grade levels. And one of the things we've been doing as an EL department this year is going around to PLCs and sharing with them this information and how it can be used by classroom teachers in adjusting their instruction in terms of what you might expect for the various students. And of course, the teachers have access to the WIDA scores for the students in their classes. Now, there's been some other changes. While the total number of English learners in the district has stabilized, we are seeing some movement. First of all, the elementary population is decreasing slightly each year, while the secondary EL population is increasing. So the total number is about the same, but we're seeing a shift. We used to see very heavily elementary loaded in terms of our EL population, and it's becoming a little more balanced, if you will. Secondly, our EL elementary population is becoming increasingly concentrated at Greenville Park. Greenville Park now has... Wow, yeah. About 70% of our elementary English language learners are at Greenville Park. I had to do the math in my head really quick. Now, the other thing that's happening is we're seeing more students exiting English learner services than we have in the past. I think that goes along with the fact that they're coming in with better English skills than we used to see, and therefore takes less time, if you will, to close the gap. But we're seeing kids being dismissed from English learner services at the elementary level, middle school, and high school levels. Having on the WIDA, that would be getting sixes across the board, speaking, listening, reading, and writing. And those are difficult tests. So what is the recommendation, given that we've seen all of these changes over three years and have some data about what's been going on? Well, first of all, we believe that we need to continue that all-day Transition Kindergarten class. That has proven very, very successful for those kids who come to us with the lowest language scores. However, we'd like to modify the entrance criteria to reflect the state adoption of the WIDA tests. Originally, we were giving the Oral IPT and a couple of other tests. This is the new state test that we have to administer anyway, and it's a better test than the test that we used to use. So, you know, it makes sense for us to move to that instrument for doing our screening. Secondly, we'd like to provide instruction in both English and Spanish, particularly so that those kids who go on to the Contemporary are not at a disadvantage. Now, specifically, the program criteria, we would use the MODL as the assessment tool because that's what you use for pre-kindergarten and through kindergarten. I'm not sure what happened there.
Look at the button right there.
There we go. Thank you. Our first priority would be to those students who are scoring at Level 1, which is entering. Level 1 is comparable to what we used to think of as non-English speaking. Then our second priority, after we've gathered all the Level 1 kindergarten, incoming kindergarteners from across the district, would begin to look at those students who scored at Level We would assess students in early to mid-August. One of the things that we saw is last year, we pre-tested the children in the spring on the Oral IPT, and then we tested them in the fall on the WIDA, and we saw some incredible growth over the summer. And so it made sense to us to do it as late as possible, and this would be right before the elementary principals are doing the class assignments. Now, this will have to be done by, excuse me, by our English learner teachers because you have to go through a training program and be certified to give the WIDA and the MODL. We would have to bring them in for extra hours, but we could pay them out of federal title funds to do that without incurring any additional general fund costs to the district. Now, the program itself would be instructed in both English and Spanish. Spanish would be their L1 or native language, and English would be their second language. The morning kindergarten curriculum would be co-taught in English by a fluent Spanish-speaking kindergarten teacher and an EL instructor. Now, that doesn't mean that they're not going to inject some Spanish in there, because if they're learning a new vocabulary word, they might also use the Spanish to help them understand the English and so forth. But the main thrust of that morning kindergarten would be instruction in English. And then we would continue to support development of the Spanish language by having the afternoon enrichment portion of kindergarten taught in Spanish. If you will, this looks a little more closely like our Companeros program than it does the current way that it is operating. Now, we believe that the benefits of this is that it's designed to increase the English literacy for those native Spanish-speaking kindergarten students who have the least developed English language skills. It continues to support for Spanish language instruction at the kindergarten level. It provides instruction in English literacy for those students who will be entering the Contemporary programs, they're not at that first-year disadvantage. And it is cost-neutral compared to the existing EL transition program. Same cost, same staff ratio, it's just changing how we're delivering, if you will, that system and the criteria we're using to assess it. Now, one of the questions I think is probably in your mind is, well, if it's really important that you have that foundational first language, why are we giving that up? Because we're seeing kids coming in with stronger first languages. That's one of the changes that's occurring. And so the big thrust of that original model, that population is getting smaller and smaller and smaller. It's still important, and that's why we want to have the afternoon in Spanish, but that high need that we had is diminishing, and we see that diminishing not only in kindergarten coming in, but across the district. Questions?
Board members? Anne?
And this question might have to also go to Erin. As I was listening to this, I was thinking about the summer programs that community ed offers. Is there a way to measure how that helps with the younger students with their English? Are they participating in this kind of thing?
Go ahead, Carrie.
Well, if you're talking about targeted services, they're not eligible until after their first kindergarten year.
Or are you even talking about just any things they sign up for?
The Bridges to Kindergarten.
Bridges to K.
To K program. Probably does impact this to some level. So we have three weeks of programming where kids that are probably also falling into the group that Gari is discussing would be spending three weeks at their elementary school in August prior to the school starting.
Other questions? Julie?
Yeah, I had the same question that Anne had, because when I looked at the community ed programs that we have with ECFD, Family School, Luncheon Learning, Bridges to Kindergarten, it does seem like we have such a comprehensive amount of programs, and I had wondered also if we have data that shows those kids participating in those programs to where they're coming on board with, you know, sort of a leg up, which is, you know, obviously the intent of these programs, but do we know if that population is directly benefiting from those programs?
I can always speak for the population that I work with, which is preschool, which is largely students that are receiving special education services. And one of the things that we find with the students that are coming to us that we identify for early childhood special education is that many of the non-native English-speaking students have not had many opportunities in the community through some of the programs that we're talking about. And so for many of them, coming into early childhood special education is one of the first avenues they have of really accessing services from the school district.
Then I had one other question. What percent of students are picking Companeros over Contemporary? Which path are they choosing to take once they leave this program as a percent?
Last year, there were approximately 18 students in ESLK, and I think all but two chose Companeros. So in that lottery system, we went with the third, native Spanish, and then two-thirds English, nine students out of the 16 approximately wound up in the Companeros program, and the other seven wound up in the Contemporary program, which was one of the conundrums, because then they're in first grade, first grade for the first year, getting English literacy for the first year, and that's what made it a very difficult program for those children. But about, yeah, all but, on the ESLK side, all but two chose to be in the lottery for the Companeros program.
And then ultimately, seven went into the Contemporary.
Contemporary program, yeah.
Thank you.
Carrie?
So you anticipated my question about the, you know, are we really stepping away from this notion of strong literacy in your first language? And I think what I hear you saying is we're not really stepping away from it, but I guess my question is, how intentional will the literacy component of that enrichment afternoon in Spanish be? That was a really convoluted question, but you know what I'm getting at?
Yes, I think I do. Obviously, it was changes in our population and the changes that we were seeing of what was happening to our students. You know, seven out of 18 in an English-speaking classroom was concerning to us. And so, you know, this was based off the two facts of the changing demographics and the results that we were seeing of where our kids were going. There will still be instruction in the afternoon. Many of the activities will still be, will be in Spanish, will be reinforcing the kinds of things that occur in the morning. So there will be, they'll be working on vocabulary, they'll be working on counting, they'll be working on many of the same kinds of things that they work on in the morning. It's just that we're going to embed the English into the morning so that it is very, very intentional.
Go ahead.
And then, you know, you were saying that of the 18 students in the class last year, nine of them would have met the criteria of when we first implemented this.
Nine met the criteria of being, as under the old testing system, being non-English speakers and non-Spanish speakers. What was interesting is when we gave the WIDA in the fall, the category one, if you will, only five of the 18 met it.
Okay. And so those students will get, you know, pushed in with ESL or whatever additional services they need?
Those students will be in that classroom, and it will be co-taught by a native Spanish-speaking teacher and an EL instructor. So their EL instruction will be embedded right into that class throughout the entire morning curriculum, if you will.
Do we have an EL teacher in that classroom now?
Yes.
So it's really just the, what they're doing with their day, it's really not changing the professionals that are with the students. Is that right?
Say it again, Carrie. My right ear doesn't hear at all.
We have a, sorry, I was drifting away there. Right now, we have the regular classroom teacher, and then we have an EL teacher in the classroom.
Yes, correct.
And so we're not really changing the professionals that are in the classroom, we're changing how they are allocating their time.
Yeah, and the ESL or EL teacher will predominantly spend most of her time there in the morning with the EL instruction for them, and then there may be some need for that person to also fulfill some of the EL needs in the other kindergarten classrooms in the afternoon. But since the kindergarten classroom teacher is proficient in Spanish, the Spanish, it'll be more of a Spanish immersion approach in the afternoons. And in the afternoon of kindergarten is really, you know, you've got your expiration time, you've got your lunch, you've got your recess, you've got your specials, you've got a lot of the social time. It's less academic anyway, so it's actually a very good time to do the Spanish literacy piece in an immersion form. Yeah.
Julie?
If those, during the portion where they are learning English, would they necessarily be identified for RTI, or would that classroom teacher handle that? To where that RTI coach wouldn't be working with those students, or potentially would they be?
Their primary intervention is going to be English language services.
Okay.
Because, you know, what we've identified as being the greatest impediment to their learning at this point in time is the language, the vocabulary, and all of those kinds of things. So that entire year, if you will, is going to be zeroed in on addressing that issue. Now, could there still be interventions in terms of behavior or something like that? That's possible. But the primary intervention is going to be that kindergarten. It is unto itself, at least from my perspective, an intervention for those kids who come to us with the least English language skills.
Can I take a crack at that too? Because you're asking a very good question. We met with my student support team today, and we talked about how we've had a number of EL students come through SST. You know, one of their primary interventions is, you know, being in that program in language acquisition and so forth. But you raise a good point, because the students who are ELs who've come through SST, we've had an opportunity to do that problem-solving for them and find out what the greatest area of concern is and so forth. We've discovered that there are some things that we can do to help improve their academic programming in addition to that ESL or EL service. And just to give an example, without mentioning any names, we have a student who's a fourth grader and three, four years below grade level in reading in English, okay? And then three years below in math. We implemented a program of problem-solving for this particular student. We had to get really creative to help support that. Now, it turns out, after having intervened in RTI like you're suggesting for this student, in addition to the EL services, this student has gone up a year and a half in reading and is currently doing fourth grade math. So the EL service in terms of it being a standalone intervention, and it's the only thing that those students receive, would be a misnomer in an RTI model. That's an important piece, and then, you know, you have to, you always take a kid, everything's a kid-by-kid basis, because you may have some students who have such great language needs that you wouldn't get that kind of result in RTI that I'm talking about this student. But yeah, it's a great point. Yeah, they will go through the RTI process, yeah.
Thank you. Other questions?
So, thank you. I think this, there's a lot of common sense approach to this. Now, I'll be anxious to see as we did changes that have happened with early childhood and the way to...
the way to reaching out there, that maybe the, you're talking about the population changing, and that we might continue to see that as a trend, and that this makes a lot of sense as we try to meet the needs of that population. The one question I had was, are the neighborhood leaders going to be kind of sharing this information so that incoming kindergarteners would have an understanding of, you know, I mean, the parents of those incoming kindergarteners?
Well, that's a great, that's another great question, because I just, I'm hot off our kindergarten registration night before I came here. And in the six years I've been here, this was the largest group of folks to come through kindergarten registration. Many of them, families with Latino surnames don't have any identification yet because they're doing the enrollment forms. And we had probably, in the past five years, 20, 25 people attend this night. That's 65 people here, so, this evening. So, yeah, it's changing just a little bit, it's changing just a little bit.
That's great, that's fantastic. Thank you.
And I would just share with you, basically, we are prepared to move forward with this. So, this was really a presentation to help you understand that we're really not eliminating this program, we're simply modifying it to try to address specifically some things that we're seeing, where we think we can do a better job of supporting our kids, especially those students that were, either through choice or through the lottery, are not able to continue in the Companeros, and making sure that those students have a reasonable level of initial English language support and understanding as they move into first grade. And I think you heard Michelle Morales at our last meeting where, you know, she shared, here's the really positive pieces. And then she said to you, and I think kind of left you there with kind of the, but there are also some challenges. And I think this was the challenge she was looking at in terms of saying, we want to make sure that these kids can continue to blossom and grow as first graders. And I think we've learned so much as we've done this program over the last several years about what we need to do to keep that going, going forward. Again, I think it's a credit to, you know, our EL staff and our kindergarten staff that they're constantly looking at and thinking about what needs to make sense there, and they are ready to say, you know, we can make these adjustments because that's going to do what needs to be done for kids. So, I think it's a very positive move on our part.
Very good. All right, we are ready to move on to our first item for individual action, which is a revision to policy 533 out of the Wellness Committee and the Wellness Policy. Dr. Richardson, do you want to say anything?
Just, again, very briefly, this is coming back to you now for the second time, and it does have now the corrections without the notes added. So, this will be exactly what happens in terms of the things that have been removed and the things that will be inserted in terms of the Wellness Policy. I think the really great thing with this is Pam has re-energized the Wellness Committee and really sat down with them to say, okay, given that this policy was put in place as a mandate from the federal government through child nutrition, I think she's come back now and said, okay, let's really look to see what will make this work. And I think in talking to staff and parents and others, I think her feeling is that these adjustments will get us where we need to be. And so, again, what we would encourage you now on second reading, and our recommendation would be that you would approve these changes in the policy 533 for adoption tonight.
All right. Before we discuss, why don't I ask for a motion to be on the table?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Julie, seconded by John. Before we get into discussion, I was just, I was actually the board member on the Wellness Committee, so I thought I'd share with the board. The committee consists of parents, instructional staff, fourth service personnel, Pam obviously leading it, and we also had our activities director involved in it. And if you hadn't, I think board members all got a chance to read through the policy, but also the addendums, I think, are really critical. Because the discussion amongst the committee was really looking at the policy from a what's happening in our classrooms and how can the Wellness Policy best serve the students? So, it's not, in fact, to say we should be rewarding students with food every time, but to look at the fact that how predominant food is as part of the celebration and recognition, and how can those be, provide some healthy choices when food is used? And I think that the addendums do a really nice job of kind of outlining some even different ideas beyond food, and then how to make some healthy choices in terms of activity and in terms of food choices. So, I guess I just wanted to let the board know that really the discussion with parents and the instructional staff and the people that were a member of the committee was really looking at what are, what's really happening in the classroom and in our schools and beyond the classroom, and how can the Wellness Policy best serve the students? Questions and discussion? No?
I may have to appropriate to this, but I'll bring it up. I had a parent come in some time ago, not being critical, but informing me, and it was very helpful to me, of their child's allergies. And how some of the food was really, it was very appealing to the child, only to know the sufficient amount, and the child went up in the hospital. And so, is that in here somewhere? I see a condition, making a combination of religious, ethnic, and cultural, but I'm wondering if there's anything about allergies.
You know, I don't even remember that coming up in discussion either.
I've scanned over it.
Yeah, I don't remember that even coming up.
And I just bring it to your attention.
I know at the same time, however, we have discussed the issues around allergies several times at cabinet over the last several years. We have talked specifically to building principals who've talked to their staffs about what's, what are the appropriate kinds of things to look for. We also are, I think, hyper-focused at times, especially when we have allergies that are potentially life-threatening. So, you know, we do have students that have peanut allergies. We also have students that they're not eating it, but have latex allergies. And so, I think the focus is there, although it really isn't addressed in the Wellness Policy, the focus is there. And I think in terms of looking at the healthy food ideas, the real focus of the appendix and the healthy food ideas is trying to steer both classrooms and parents who are choosing to bring something in to a healthy snack versus the cupcake and the high-sugar fruit drink as being the party choice. And we know that, 504, thank you, Gary, 504, because that's the other place where this is going to fit in, is that we would actually have students who would end up with a 504 plan because of their allergies and because of the impact, and that part is impacted.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your answer.
Julie?
Oh, I was just going to comment that I've noticed through my kids' history in Northfield Schools that if a teacher is aware that a student has a particular sensitive, like, peanut allergy, oftentimes they will say, you know, if someone is bringing treats for a Halloween party or that sort of thing, they'll say, there are some students in our classroom who have that allergy, just to give parents the heads up as well.
Carrie?
Number nine here, so vending machines not available during the day for preschool students, and I neglected to bring my notes from last time. That's because they don't have vending machines in the elementary and middle school?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
And if this entire paragraph's being eliminated, then the paragraph numbers will change.
Right.
Yeah, okay. That'll be fixed in the drawing.
Denise, are you taking copias?
I didn't hear what you said.
So, what it was is, when you, when-
On page, yeah.
When number 10 is completely deleted, I'm assuming, because it's probably a Word document, that when you eliminate a number, it's going to automatically renumber things.
That should be the case.
Yeah, and it will become 10, and 12. And I do believe that's the only place where we have a complete stricture of-
No, we have E, but that's the last in the sequence.
Yeah, so we've not wrote anything else out there.
We'll also under C. Oh, no, excuse me, 3 isn't a totally eliminated.
Right.
No.
Right. Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the Wellness Committee's recommendations for changes in policy 533. All those in favor of changing the policy as recommended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are ready to move on to the items in the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Anne? Seconded by Carrie. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have three items for information. I'll remind board members, there is a third item that was added in your table file. So, the first item is the enrollment report.
And again, as you know, you get this on a monthly basis, so this just simply updates you in terms of the total number of students that are in our district at this time. And again, as I would say, I could, you could have, you know, recorded this and sent it back for the last eight or nine years, our numbers are very, very stable. And actually, this year, as of March 1, our numbers are up a little bit from the previous month. But, you know, again, we stand at approximately 3,900 students, which has been our placement for many, many years, which is all good. You also notice, and again, I know at times you do have the questions about, well, you know, how big are those class sizes at the elementary or whatever? The good thing about this, and as board members, I would simply say, this is a nice piece to have because it does really, you know, somebody says, well, you know, I've heard that there's a huge class size somewhere, or a very small class size somewhere. You can identify in any one of the elementary buildings exactly what the numbers look like for each of the buildings and for each of the grade levels.
And then, our second item for information is the closed negotiation strategy session, which will be held immediately following the regular school board meeting, which is Monday, April 8. And I remind board members, we don't have a second board meeting in March, so it is our next board meeting if that strategy would happen.
And again, that session, and Matt, you might want to share, but it's, it'll be typically the opening session, a chance to talk about kind of ground rules and approaches that we want to take. Again, we are probably at least a month to a month and a half ahead of the end of session. And so, really, in terms of talking about major issues about funding or resources until the session ends, we really are not in a position to go forward with a lot of discussion on that end, but I'm sure there will be language issues as there always are.
All right. And then, our third item for information is the global calendar discussion. And board members, you had in your packets a proposed timeline sheet.
And I think the important thing here is, again, the next meeting occurs before your next board meeting. So, as a reminder, we're looking at April the 2nd from 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock, again, in the high school upper cafeteria. Mary did an outstanding job on our first session. We had about 40-plus people there, and actually, Mary and Nancy have just basically finished and compiled all the data that was gathered from all the different groups. That's going to go up on the website, I'm guessing, tomorrow, so that everybody will have a chance to take a look at that. And it is basically the raw data, so it is, it is every single comment made by every single person. And the only thing we've done is put it into groups reflecting that it was the table groups that generated and provided the information. So, I think it's a really good place to start. As anticipated, it shows people are in a whole variety and diverse places in terms of what they're thinking about with the calendar. You know, again, my hope was that initially, we were able to give them a little bit of the sense of the fact that calendars around the country and calendars around the world are not necessarily all the same, and that maybe some of the notions of how calendars are put together, or the fact that every calendar is obviously exactly the same as ours is right now are really myths. For this next time, we really will be trying to give folks some real understanding of the research data that we have right now in terms of different measures or looks at what does instructional time have to do with learning? And looking, especially in summer slide, looking at time on task, but also looking at some pieces around some of the newest research that shows what happens when you change the number of days that you have before you have the major assessment pieces. So, we'll try to kind of lay out that out for people, because I think people, especially in Northfield, want that research information. And then, the other thing we hope to do then is to begin having people working this time in groups to take the data that we have in terms of this raw data and begin to categorize it. Because for us to be able to work with it, we need to really find out what are the themes that have came through this piece? And obviously, we have themes around the, you know, how long the school year should be, should it be longer or shorter? We have thoughts about how long should the day be, longer or shorter? We have thoughts about when should it start? We have thoughts about what should the breaks look like? We have thoughts about how we should connect with the local colleges versus how we should connect with Minskew or the university system. So, I think the really interesting piece now will be to begin to get people to begin taking those individual thoughts and saying, well, where do those fit in terms of possible calendar discussions? And again, hopefully, from that second session, then really being able to begin thinking about, at least at the 30,000-foot level, what might be some calendar options that we'd like to explore further, which will actually then come as part of the third meeting. So, again, I was very, very pleased with the number of folks that came, the variety of opinions that they had. You'll also notice that all of the things that we've been working with, with Griff Wigley, in terms of the engagement piece, are getting up and running. There's a draft straw poll calendar, or calendar straw poll that's already up. We've got the information from the March 7 meeting, and this data, again, will be going up so that people will have as much of the information out that they can begin chewing on and thinking about before we get to that next meeting. So, again, I'm really pleased with how we're getting started with this. And again, just wanted to remind you that that one I won't be able to remind you about, other than we will send you an email reminder, won't we, Denise? Yes, we will. Okay. All right, so we, to make sure that board members are there and can be involved.
So, yeah, I'd also like to thank the community members that came to that meeting, and Mary and Dr. Richardson for all of facilitating and providing that information. And I know that I had a few people that emailed me that day saying, sorry, I can't make it, I want to be involved. So, I think that having that site that Matt's working on with Griff is really helpful because we want to keep moving, we don't want to repeat these meetings, we want the group to feel like we're hearing them and we're moving forward, but it allows other people to enter into the conversation if they need to come in a later date.
Correct.
So, very good. All right, so, future meetings, we will not have another one in March. Our next meeting together as a regular school board meeting is April 8 and then April 22. So, with that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Noel.
Sorry.
Seconded by John.
You got it, John.
All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
All right, very good.